Council. It's seven o'clock. Let's everyone, please, I call this meeting in order. Let's everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, every being just as strong.
Thank you, council. And next we have roll call. Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present, with Counselor Carson previously requesting to be excused, and his absence is an excused absence.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
What's second?
Not not excusing Counselor Carson from the meeting.
Okay, alrighty.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we allow citizens to make comments. We do ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. If you are still talking at the three-minute mark, we will politely ask you to end your comments at this time. We'll start off with the audience who are here, and then we'll go to the Zoom participants. So it doesn't look like we have anyone here. So we'll go ahead and go to the Zoom participants. And Ms. Martinez, if you could give them instructions on how to raise their hand so they can be recognized if they would like to speak during this comment section.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak right now, you can use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, it looks like we have one person with their hand raised.
Okay, and that name.
Looks like Jeremy.
Jeremy, okay. Jeremy, and if you all could start the clock. Jeremy, please unmute yourself and you could start making your comments.
Hello, this is Jeremy again, just coming back to speak through Zoom. I've been a little hesitant to show as I left with the deprivation of my rights. I wanted to go into how I've lost my human rights and other things also. But I've run into a little bit of a conflict. It has to do with Aaron Miltonberger, thus myself showing through Zoom and not in in person anymore. I'm scared. I'm dealing with a corporal birch that is kind of disturbing. They promised me that the Aaron Miltonberger report is ready and prepared for me, so I'm ready to purchase it when I'm interfered with by a Sergeant Squires. Now Sergeant Squires was in 2020 before I ever dealt with Alonzo Payne, and in fact, the current Attorney General said that I should wait for the new Attorney General. So there's been from one place to the next of deprivation of rights, and it was well before Alonzo Payne there ever was a elective for Alamosa. Now, Ann Kelly, I've tried to discuss these things with, but it's impossible. She will not listen to me, does not tolerate myself after my victims' rights were violated by Alonzo Payne. But I'm concerned that this community is overlooking abuse of children and the predator, he was a repeat abuser, and I don't think Alamosa understands or respects a repeat abuser, especially when Lola Garcia is able to lie to Sergeant Kinshew, when Sergeant Kinshew required of me to get the mandated reports from Lola Garcia. So there's a lot of conflict. I don't like hearing I'm muddying up the water from a corporal birch to see Squires interfere. And it seems like Corporal Birch's new form of reporting. When she first refused to do any reports to me, I gave a message to Heather Sanchez. Now she is doing reports against me and not to help. And she didn't even look into Aaron Miltonberger, and I'm concerned because the Boys and Girls Club of America have said there is misconduct. What that misconduct is, I do not know. It doesn't come from anybody in Alamosa. It comes from Atlanta, Georgia, and from a pro-sidium third party to the Boys and Girls Club. Now, you don't lie to an officer about abuse of children, but that's what is happening, and that's others know it's what's happening, but they're able liars, and I'm rather tired of policing misconduct in this community. It needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I just leave now, or?
You have twenty-six seconds. You can leave or you can stay and finish.
Oh, I had no idea, not seeing the timer here, so I will end this now. Good day.
Okay, good day. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other hands raised, Ms. Martinez?
We do not.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the agenda and bring it down to ceremonial items. And here on City Council here in Alamosa, we share in reading proclamations. And tonight, we have Mayor Pro Tim Hensley, who's going to read the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month proclamation presented and requested by SLV Behavior Health Group.
Alrighty. So Suicide Prevention Awareness Month proclamation. This proclamation proudly designates the month of September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Alamosa, nestled in the heart of the San Luis Valley, Colorado. Whereas the communities of the San Luis Valley understand the profound significance of raising awareness about suicide prevention and its vital role in promoting the overall well-being of our distinctive region. And whereas the ripple effects of mental health challenges resonate deeply within our tightly knit families and neighborhoods, impacting lives from Alamosa to Crestone and from Suatch to Montevista. And whereas the San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group in partnership with our dedicated municipal authorities stands unwavering in its commitment to provide essential resources and unwavering support to aid individuals as they bravely confront mental health-related struggles. And whereas we acknowledge and honor the exceptional individuals within our valley who have triumphed over mental health challenges, weaving their narrative into the rich tapestry of our community. And whereas the San Luis Valley, renowned for its breathtaking landscapes and resilient communities, embraces the responsibility of addressing the pervasive impact of mental health issues that touch the lives of adults and the next generation each year. And whereas we recognize that only a fraction of those grappling with severe mental health challenges seek the necessary care and assistance, and thus we endeavor to bridge this gap by fostering a culture of empathy and support. And whereas we acknowledge that the shadows of stigma and apprehension often cast shadows upon those who courageously seek their help they deserve, and we are determined to dissolve this darkness with understanding and acceptance. And whereas our local communities have borne witness to the transformative power of personal interactions with individuals who have emerged triumphant from the struggle against mental health challenges, thereby playing a pivotal role in dismantling misconceptions and biases. And whereas we comprehend that nurturing, robust mental and emotional well-being is not only essential for our families and neighborhoods, but also crucial for the flourishing of our esteemed educational institutions and thriving businesses. And whereas the San Luis Valley, in collaboration with our devoted partner municipality, is steadfast in amplifying public awareness about mental health issues, embarking on collective voyage to reshape attitudes and behaviors, and tirelessly advocating for accessible, effective services for every individual journey along the path of recovery. Now therefore, Ty Coleman, Mayor of City of Alamosa in the San Luis Valley, Colorado, and on behalf of the entire City Council, proclaim and declare September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. As the mayor, he implores every resident, government entity, public and private establishment, business and school within the vast embrace of the San Luis Valley to unite in reaffirming our unwavering commitment to enhance awareness and comprehension of mental health challenges to erode the bedrock of stigma and bias, and to vigorously champion fitting and easy accessible services for all navigating the intricate journey of recovery.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Hensley. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, Consent Calendar A. Counselor Jan V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Real quick, Mayor, just a note.
Sure.
I know a lot of us up here throughout the years have commented commented on the 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 lack of effectiveness of the federal government at times and how things are crazy up there. I just want to highlight that a good thing that the federal government did in this bipartisan infrastructure law that Alamosa County is getting to take advantage of, so.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you very much, Counselor Jan V. Hill. We have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, Business Brought Forward by City Staff, Second Reading and Public Hearing for Ordinance Number Twenty Dash Twenty Twenty Four, and Ordinance Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with Numerous Entities Statewide to Participate in a Statewide Colorado Information Sharing Consortium.
Mayor, council, we're asking for this approval so that way we can share information across state with other neighboring agencies or agencies. That way we can do records checks with people that we deal with on a daily basis, or if they're having crimes in a different part of the state, that we can obtain those records more easily through this.
Thank you, Captain Mestas. So what we'll go ahead and do now is open up the public hearing for ordinance number Twenty Dash Twenty Twenty Four, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with numerous entities statewide to participate in the statewide Colorado information sharing consortium. We have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing? We ask that you come up to the podium and make your comments. Okay, I don't see anyone coming to the podium, so we'll go to Zoom. Ms. Martinez, if you can give instructions of how they can raise their hand to make comments in this public hearing, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this public hearing, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Here, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back over to council for any comments or motion. Also, Jan V. Hill?
Mayor, I am I move that we approve on second reading, public ordinance number Twenty Dash Twenty Twenty Four.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, council. That brings us down to the next item on the agenda, Second Reading and Public Hearing for Ordinance Number Eighteen Dash Twenty Twenty Four, Amending Chapter Ten, Article Seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa Concerning Licenses of Private Security Services.
Okay, council, this ordinance is updating our private security services. It does four things. The police department's no longer responsible for certifying gun range proficiency, makes it a lot easier than the investigation by the clerk into the character of the applicant is simplified. It exempts the peace officers from licensing requirements, which they can go in moonlight right now, and then it moves the requirement for a bond, which is unnecessary right now.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open up this public hearing for ordinance number Eighteen Dash Twenty Twenty Four, amending Chapter Ten of Article Seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa Concerning Licenses of Private Security Services. We have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time regarding this public hearing? Ordinants, please come up to the podium and make your comments. I don't see anyone in the audience coming to the podium, so we'll go ahead and turn it over to Zoom. If you're on Zoom, and since instructions have been given out a few times already, if you would like to make comments in this hearing, please raise your hand, and we'll recognize you to make comments at this time. Okay, Ms. Martinez, I don't see any hands raised.
I don't either, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Counselor Liz Hensley?
I move that we adopt ordinance number Eighteen Dash Twenty Twenty Four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, council, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, council. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, Resolution Number Ten Dash Twenty Twenty Four, placing questions of allowing medical and retail marijuana and approving a tax on their sales on the November coordinated election ballot. We have our attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll recall at your, I think it was July first, meeting that council voted to place the question of legalizing or allowing medical and/or retail marijuana stores, outlets, or shops, placing that on this November ballot. And this is the meeting at which you need to adopt the form of the question that that ballot will contain. And then the city clerk will certify that over to the county clerk for placement on the November ballot in the coordinated election. What you've got before you are three different templates for the ballot question that you need to choose between, and you can modify them. They're not cast in stone. But there are basically three approaches. The approach that staff found to be, I guess, clearest, maybe would be the best way to put that, would be two questions. One is legalize and tax retail marijuana, and the other is legalize and tax medical marijuana. So those can be voted on separately. People might have different opinions about retail versus medical was the thinking. But we wanted to include the taxation question in the legalization question so that you don't get one without the other. So that's template A. Template B separates all of those questions out into four separate questions. So it's legalize recreational is question one, tax recreational is question two, legalize medical is question three, and tax medical is question four. Then version C is combine them all back together into one question. Legalize, that was one overarching question, legalize and tax both medical and recreational. So those are the three broad speaking approaches you can take. And now within those approaches, the proposed resolutions that are before you have to have blanks filled in. And the blanks are, you need to decide what tax rate you want to have, and then you also need to decide what maximum estimated revenue from that tax rate you want to put before the voters. Because what happens when you put that estimate in is that if you, for some reason, receive more revenue than that, you have to give back any amount that came in above the estimate that was put in the question. So, and I've given you, or we've given you some information to look at in terms of what other tax rates are in municipalities across the state. They're generally around five percent. Some are a little higher, some are a little lower. But I would say the large majority comes in right at about five percent. The state has already a fifteen percent tax rate, sales tax rate, that they keep ninety percent of and then distribute ten percent of to the local jurisdictions that do allow marijuana. So you get a little bit of that state fifteen percent plus whatever percentage you decide to put before the voters. Is that clear?
Okay, it's clear.
That's what I've got.
Thank you so, thank you so much for clarifying it. What I'll do is I'll turn it over to council for any discussions or motion that you would like to make at this time. Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the city for for making it as clear as possible. And from what I understand, with the last ballot, some of the wording was a little muddy, and this makes it very clear. I I prefer personally the first one because to our lawyer's point, some people might have different opinions between medical and recreational, and so I do appreciate that. And I do like the idea of keeping the tax together with the particular facility, so it's all rolled into one. So that's that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs.
I just realized I forgot to mention, all three of those versions do also have a provision that recognizes that any legalization will be subject to such regulations that council deems necessary to to regulate the businesses as they come online, such as licensing, zoning, even number of facilities allowed, that kind of thing. And the reason that you reminded me that I should mention that is that the twenty seventeen question said that council couldn't do anything by way of regulation beyond what the state did, kind of a weird question. So this question makes clear that there likely will be, and I'm sure there will be, various regulations that if this question passes, council would then direct staff to come up with.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Hensley?
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand this this one that is the marijuana tax revenue, twenty fourteen to date, and it just looks like it has pages and pages of, is it the same stuff?
So what that is, I'll make sure that I don't just speak there. That is the data published by the state for tax revenue in each of these counties. This is a statewide thing, and if you look at it, it's by month, so February, January, April starts off.
Okay, your microphones did. Yeah, if you could start over and say that again. Thank you. So it's it's by it's by month, starts off with month six of twenty twenty four and then goes backwards. And what I did in the council communication was try to distill some of that down. And I said, look, if we try, if we take some representative counties in the valley that have legal marijuana, like Suatch, Castilla, Canales, we could look also at Los Animas and Chafé. So I looked at all of those counties, and to try to guess what amount of revenue we might be looking at, I looked at what their annual revenue was based on the state fifteen percent sales tax and projected that out and came to those revenue conclusions that I put in the council communication, which led me to believe you could guess maybe four to five million a year in marijuana revenues. And then if you if you tax that at, say, five percent, you get the two hundred and, what was it, two hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand? I have to pull up the communication again.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to put this all together, so.
Yeah, so that that is pages and pages and pages because it goes month by month.
Got it.
Back to twenty fourteen.
So you threw in the numbers. So I'm looking at, because I also kind of favor the second one. And so when you look at version B, you have the yellow highlights. But you did put in the two to five percent because that's sort of the thought process, that that was the average?
Well, I put in that was.
I keep forgetting to turn my mic on, sorry. I put that in because the last time that council put a taxation question to the voters, it picked five percent. And I just put in two percent for medical, just to demonstrate that they don't have to be the same. You could, so pick whatever number you want. That should have been in yellow because that's a variable that you need to decide on tonight.
Thank you.
Counselor Jan V. Hill?
Yeah, a question for Ms. Hensley. You said you liked version two. Why?
I like the two questions because it separates, because I do think some people may have a different opinion on medical versus recreational. But either way, I'd want the tax tied into it, so if it does pass, that the tax passes with it.
Okay, because I'm seeing version B with four different questions.
I'd not, if I understood that one correctly, the reason why I'm not as much for that one is we could then pass to have the marijuana legalized and then no tax. Like last time, actually, the tax passed and the marijuana didn't. So I just think that it's cleaner to have it together, so there's no ramifications that we weren't expecting. So instead of making an assumption one might pass with the other, is just have them tied together.
So I'm with Counselor Krebs on version A.
That's for that, yeah.
Okay.
So maybe I said it the wrong way, the one with the two questions.
All right, then we're all we're all on the same page.
Okay.
And then I'm good with with the two percent on medical and five percent on rec. So if there's no discussions, I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve, adopt version A of the proposed ballot content resolution combining the legalization questions for medical and recreational marijuana facilities with the consummate. How do you say that word? Incomitant. I've never heard that in my life. Sales tax.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Krebs?
I have one question. Do we also have to decide the amount?
You do. And and some of the things that go into thinking about that are, if you, as I mentioned, if you put an amount that's low and your revenues come in higher, you refund. If you put an amount that's high, you got to think through, what are people going to think? Are they going to object and and vote the whole thing down because they think that's ridiculously high? Are they going to vote for it because they say, yay, the city gets a half a million dollars in revenue, and then we only get a hundred and ninety-five thousand? And, you know, so those are the things to consider. And again, when I went through the the summation that the state provided of county by county revenue for twenty twenty four, the first half of twenty twenty four, I just came up with the guesses of, let's assume you've got four to five million, a five percent tax would be two hundred to two fifty. Heather and I were talking about this, and she said, well, wouldn't it be smart to just round that way up so that you don't run the risk of having to refund anything? And I said, sure. So, you know, you that number is kind of a W A G, I think the engineers call it.
So so the number includes the state share of the tax?
No, it does not. It's just our share.
It's just our share. So anything that the state, the ten percent of the revenue from the fifteen percent sales tax, that's extra over and beyond?
We just get that. We don't have to worry about the number that we put into the ballot question for that one.
Thank you. And in that case, I would like to bounce this back possibly to Counselor V. Hill for maybe two fifty, three hundred?
I have a question for.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so if this is voted in, so let's go with, I'm just gonna, whatever number. So let's say it's two hundred and fifty thousand. Ten years from now, are we still stuck with that number?
No, so that's just in the first year, and then subsequent years, you get what you get.
Oh.
So that's just that.
So it's just the first year this.
Taber doesn't, that's a taber requirement that you have to put in that in there. Unfortunately, taber doesn't make you try to have a magic ball as to what's going to happen in the future, beyond beyond year one, which is enough of a magic ball.
So year two, whatever comes in, comes in.
Correct.
Okay, then.
Then I would agree to that amendment of, you said two fifty, Don? Two fifty-three for two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
I think you're saying two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand.
That, yes.
Three hundred thousand, going once?
Three hundred thousand, Mayor.
Okay, so are we clear on this? Everything good? The motion, the second? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I will be voting no on this because I strongly believe that the people and the citizens of Alamosa have already voted on this before, and they voted it down. So no other comments? Please start voting.
The second? Okay, Jamie.
Okay, and just to be clear, I'll put three hundred thousand in both the recreational and the medical questions. But obviously, if medical's taxed at less than half of what recreational's taxed, there's no way that much is coming in, but there's no reason not to put it in there.
Okay, the motion carried five to one with Mayor Coleman casting the no vote.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, um, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Counselor Dominguez?
Yeah, so mine is the Homeless Coalition. It was, uh, we went to bi-monthly and moved it back to monthly with the issue at Saint Benedict's. So it was, it was a very informational meeting. Uh, we were unpacking the regulations as they exist now and getting down in the weeds of what that looks like on, on shifting and changing them. So, um, I guess in short, we talked about electricity, we talked about trash cans, addressing the, the bigger issues, the weeds, the, the trash scenario, what it would look like to, um, get this more efficient and, and put more teeth into what's going on out there. Um, there was a lot of code enforcement questions that came up. Um, what's already being handed out to just everybody in general almost, and how it applies to everybody at Saint Benedict's. So we had a lot of conversations and, and were careful around, um, what we decided on. We were mostly unpacking what it looked like and then what we could do to make that better moving forward. Um, there was a lot of stuff that came up. We talked about animals, dogs, pets. Um, we had to hash out everything that applies to everybody in the city, that it should look the same there. But there's property restrictions. Um, not everybody has a yard, so we have to look, talk about what that looks like. So it really consumed a lot of our time, um, just unpacking eviction processes, um, just animals to trash, to, to the basic stuff. So we're meeting again. Um, I believe it is, I can't remember the date, but it's coming up soon. It's once a month. So we'll move into the next items that we have. Um, everybody was really giving their input and talking through what they thought. The outreach team, um, behavioral house, everybody that was involved in this scenario expressed their concerns about each item, and we all come to consensus, um, that it, what we need to do to make it work and get more, um, teeth into what's going on out there. So I was very happy with the meeting. I'm looking forward to the next one. Um, they've talked about if they had more stuff to help clean up, they would. So it was a bunch of things that were strategic, maybe just strategically putting the trash cans on each side. So it, it was some things that were low bearing fruit that we hashed out, but there's some things that are going to take some time.
Hey, thank you, uh, Counselor Dominguez. Any other committee reports? All right, that brings us down to, um, staff announcements. Ms. James and also our city attorney at this time. Any comments?
There are no staff announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Is this where you wanted me to discuss the, the meeting, open meetings requirement?
Yes, if you could, for clarification purposes.
Happy to do that.
As the public.
And, uh, Mayor, I mentioned I wanted to put something in writing so that you would all have an easy reference, and I just sent you guys an email that contains the introductory, the introduction section of the case of the Board of Commissioners of Castilla County versus the Castilla County Conservancy District, which is kind of the leading case on this issue now. Um, really, what happened in that case was that the board members of the Conservancy District, or a number of them anyway, had attended a different presentation altogether. And there was more than a quorum of them there, and so the allegation was that that should have been noticed as an open meeting under the Open Meetings Act because there was more than a quorum. The trial court said that it wasn't a meeting because there was really no business being discussed. They were there attending someone else's meeting. Um, the Court of Appeals overturned that and said, no, it's a meeting. It's more than a quorum, and they were there at a meeting together. Should have been noticed because they knew that there was going to be more than a quorum in attendance. The Supreme Court got a hold of it and said, no, 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 no. For it to be a meeting, and I'll, I'll quote the language, um, for it to be a meeting, it has to be part of a policymaking process for the purpose of discussing or undertaking a rule, regulation, ordinance, or formal action. And so if you are at a CML meeting or some other meeting that's put on, you're just attending. There's more than a quorum of you there, but you're just attending. That is not a meeting under the Open Meetings Act because there's no expectation that there's going to be any kind of action taken. Similarly, if you all, uh, are attending Senator Bennett's, uh, get together or something, you're not going to be taking any formal action on behalf of the City of Alamosa. It's not a meeting. If you all show up at the same retirement party for the college president, not a meeting, not a problem. So it's any, any meeting or any gathering at which you're going to take formal action. And I would actually recommend that we go beyond that. So that's the language of this case. But I think any meeting at which you are going to discuss city business, that's what the purpose of the meeting is, even if you're not going to take formal action, that that should be considered to be a meeting and open to the public because we really do strongly believe in transparency. And I think that the process of deliberation is as important as the actual decisions that get made. So if there's a meeting at which it's clear that council intends to discuss city business, that I think should be considered a meeting, and we provide notice under, uh, under the Open Meetings Act if there was expected to be more than a quorum there. But other chance happen, happening gatherings and informal gatherings and attending other entities' meetings, no need for, uh, to, to consider that an open meeting. So hope that covers it. It's a case out of our little valley, pretty much directly on point that gets at what the, what the elements are that make something into a meeting.
Thank you for clarifying that for us. We have new council members now, and as well as we need a refresher as, um, council as well, for those of us who've been around for a while, and we always want to be transparent, uh, with the public because the good news is, we have a group of counselors up here that they show up to a lot of things, and there's a lot of times all of us are at those events. And that's a strong sign of a good council when they show up to, um, activities in the community.
And I just want to add, we do like, on your calendar, on your council calendar, if we know that more than three of you are going to be at an event, we will put it on that calendar so that way the public does know there'll be more than three of you there.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Martinez. That helps out. Okay, any questions on that, anybody, before we go to the next item? Counselor, um, Dominguez?
So it's, it's probably better for you if we say we can be there, yes, no, or maybe, right? That helps the situations that it's not hitting nothing, like for ribbon cutting and anything, right?
Yeah, so if you guys respond yes, then I at least know I covered it on there.
Okay.
Okay, all right, that brings us down to the next item on the agenda. Liquor Licensing Authority Actions, Consent Calendar B.
Mayor, I, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
Good. That brings us to the last item on the agenda tonight, Council Comments. Do we have anyone with any, uh, council comments? I don't see any, uh, lights on, so I'll just wrap things up. Uh, want to thank the entire city staff, everyone who participated in an early on event, all the participants who came and, um, supported the event, and all the vendors and suppliers, and the people who put their cars in the car shows, once again, made it a successful event. Our parks were, uh, amazingly beautiful and, and attractive to the people. I had nothing but a lot of positive comments come from people throughout our community. So thank you, team, for that effort. Okay, we have no further discussion. This meeting is adjourned.